We'll get going for tonight. Welcome to the City of Gilbert Regular City Council Meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, October 8th, 24 at 6:02 PM. Present is interim clerk Mike Skurvik, Councillor Potvin, myself Mayor Smith, Councillor Polis, and Councillor Skinsich. Also in attendance is attorney Brian Lindsey, Chief Teacher, and Sue from the library. I'm sorry, your last name? DeBoss. Brain fart. Sue DeBoss from the library. And we do have a quorum. If everybody would please stand and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we do have one addition. To the consent agenda. Moved by Councillor Polis. Supported by Councillor Skinsich. The addition is to the payroll, or not payroll, to the bills. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. None. Motion carries, four to zero. Consent agenda. Yes, yes.
Just like to advertise for rink attendance under item D.
Yeah, Jim.
Move ad. Support.
Moved by Councillor Skinsich, supported by Councillor Polis to add to item D on the agenda rink, application for rink attendance for this winter. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. None. Motion carries, four to zero. Did you have anything else? Mike? Thank you. And we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Moved by Councillor Polis.
A second.
Supported by Councillor Potvin. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. None. Motion carries, four to zero. Is there any public input tonight?
My name is Dylan Horn and I live over on New Jersey. I am asking that this spring, there was a retaining wall on the corner of First Court in Louisiana that collapsed onto the right-of-way on First Court. Retaining wall has not been shored up yet over the summer. We are going into the winter months with snow plowing. There's still retaining wall blocks and dirt sitting in the roadway. I'm asking if the city can intervene with the landowner that we get that addressed before the snowfalls. Is that anything the city can control?
Is that the property? Is that on Louisiana?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Louisiana and First Court, it's on Louisiana, right?
Yep. The front of the house is on Louisiana, the side garage is on First Court.
Where the wall is, is on First Court, correct?
So, we decided we weren't going to fix the wall, but do we want to just take the block away? Is that what they're requesting?
Well, to reach out to the landowner if I'm correct, to see if they would.
Basically, at this point, you know, it's a hazard for the rest of the city. So if the landowner's not going to do anything about the wall itself, since it's in the right-of-way, because what we talked about this spring was, they wrote, they put it past the easement and they didn't pull a permit according to city records. So therefore, it's technically on city property. You know, I'm just wondering if the city has a plan to address this retaining wall issue before it gets any worse going into the winter.
I would recommend you just take the block away and dump them. Put in a bucket and get rid of the block and clean up the sand that came onto the pavement and be done with it.
I don't think it's our property to do that.
That's, yeah, I think Sam would have to have a chat with them.
What's on the alley though is, if the block is on the alley, we could clean that up.
It's on the street.
It's on the street, whatever, yeah.
They've had, I think they have barricades still around it, isn't there?
So there's a snow fence in front of it and it's kind of just like haphazardly put there.
Yeah.
So it's not a long-term solution. So if we can shore it up somehow before winter, the city or the landowner.
Almost seems like a blight issue of some sort too though, but I don't know.
Yeah. That's kind of why I bring it up at this point.
I mean, can't we just clean up, you know, right up to the edge of the street? And take that block out if he doesn't want it. Otherwise pile it onto his land if he wants the block and just make it passable.
I think Jeremy's recommendation that it's partly on his property is valid. We should probably reach out and just ask him if he would allow us to remove it.
Yeah.
Before we do anything, because if we remove it, then he could say we didn't have permission.
Correct.
Kind of with us.
Yeah.
Whatever, if he wants to work with the city, just to open that street up, however it happens. If he wants the block, wants the block gone, if he wants the city to like a little bit of scoop onto his land to clean it up for him, whatever, you know, agree.
I think, yeah.
Just talk to him and see what we got.
Have a conversation with him and see what he plans on doing with the blocks.
I'll follow up with Sam if that's okay with everybody.
Correct. Yes.
I just don't want to do, I don't want the city to do something and then all of a sudden we're like, we're claiming liability for it.
Yep.
Right.
We already kind of said, we already.
Said we're not.
We weren't going to, so.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Any other public input? All right, we'll move on to the reports from the mayor and council. I just have one comment, I guess, to say with the hurricane that hit North Carolina. Thoughts and prayers to all the survivors out there and families that lost relatives, friends, whatever, from that hurricane. And thoughts and prayers to Florida with the next hurricane coming in tomorrow. Hopefully they find shelter and get out of this state. So that's all I had. Councillor Potvin?
I was just curious how this weekend went down at the campground, if they had a good attendance or anything? Because it is closed down for the season, right?
It is closed down. Wendy did not provide me a report. She did send a file on my desk that I haven't had a chance to look at yet. I'll have to take a look at it.
I was just curious if any of the council knew how the turnout was there.
Some of it, like the campground was packed.
Yeah, it was. I drove by there, I think it was Friday night, and it was packed. There was a good crowd.
Was there a run over into the other?
Yes. It looked like all of that was filled.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah.
So another 10 or 15 more overrun?
More than that. Whatever the capacity was, it was from, yeah, yeah.
From Sherwood Forest. Bury me. I think that holds 50 max. Isn't that what their additional was, or 40 or 50?
I think so.
25. Is that all that one is? Okay.
Yeah, all of that was, it looked full.
Not a good way to end the year then.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yep. Thank you. Councillor Polis?
The only thing I have to add is I've been missing the last three due to personal issues and busy at work this time of year, we get swamped, so I do apologize for that.
That's all you got?
That's it.
Thank you. Councillor Skinsich?
I have, I had two things, but Sammy's not here. Maybe the, somebody else has heard, I guess, status on our new dump truck? If we've heard anything yet?
Our new dump truck is supposed to be delivered by September 29th.
Okay. And then, September 29th.
What year?
I guess you didn't say what year, so.
Twenty thirty.
I know that we asked for it not to come here and to go to the.
It's got to get fitted.
Outfit to be fitted with a dump box and everything, so I'll check on it.
All right.
I'll send you an email.
The other thing is, did the excess, the old fire truck get put onto anything for sale?
It did.
It did, you know?
I gave them the title yesterday.
Perfect. That's all, thank you.
Are you going to buy it?
No.
Nice looking truck.
Sure, it is.
I used it for 20 years.
Good watering truck. All right. We'll move on to reports from staff boards and commissions. Fire chief isn't here. Attorney Lindsey?
No, no report, mayor. I am happy to field any questions at the council meeting.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Sue, library director.
Families here in town with younger children. We've got a story time going all month. Then we'll be next one, if it's the last one. What we're doing is we're just putting up, when we're open, bringing the kids in, reading stories that we have selected for the theme of the month, do a craft, kids get treats, get water and a flavor, then they get to go to the treasure chest. So it's just a, we're trying to bring families together instead of me leading it while they stay on home. We're having the parents involved. Or remember the grandparent, parent, auntie, uncle. And so this is the all month, every month, we're going to continue through winter. Sunday, October 20th, from 2 to 5, Bingo at St. Joseph's Church, Catholic church up there. This is a fundraiser for our foundation. We will be handing out cheap bags all day, Halloween. Musical program Tuesday, November 5th, what he made at five, Sutter Brothers. The two guys play off each other and they sing and they do instruments. So it's a great hour and of course, great. And that's what they have these.
Excellent. Thank you. Pete, you're up. First responders.
Sure. That's something else, but I see you disappeared. That's all I, we can handle this. Good evening, council. I'm requesting the hiring of Erica Burquist as the newest first responder for Gilbert. She's taking all the training, she's actually ready to go. So I'm, she passed all the background checks, she's certified, and I'd like permission from the council to hire her. This will bring us up to six first responders. Unfortunately, one of our first responders last weekend got involved in an ATB accident and that individual's going to be laid up for a while. So, and it just, you know, we do 150 calls a year. Requirement that the council passed is that responders make at least one call a month, which is 12. You multiply that by six, you've got a good number of calls that are covered. Of course, we're, you know, with, with what's happening with volunteers and, and what's going on, you know. Red, I think we're at a good level. I'd like, obviously like more, but I think we're at a good place. I'm a scrouger and I was able recently to get a donation, some pagers. Department and some additional portable radios from an area healthcare provider. So I'm also looking for needles. So again, I would like permission from the council to, to hire her.
I'll move. Moved by Councillor Polis.
I'll support.
Supported by Councillor Skinsich to approve the hiring of Erica Burquist as first responder. Any further discussion?
What area do you cover, Pete?
We cover basically the city of Gilbert.
Oh, just the.
Just the city of Gilbert.
Not Fayette?
No.
Or Bylawic Township? Okay.
We work with the Virginia and ambulance because the area out, I think it's knee drive in that area is actually an ambulance response area.
Okay.
As part of Cedar Island Drive in different.
Okay.
So.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. None. Motion carries, four to zero.
Well, I, I see that our police chief has disappeared, but I'm going to do this anyway and then Mayor Smith, you can deal with it. Couple of years ago, the previous mayor suggested that the police chief wear a little more brilliant uniform, although, you know, Ty is very well dressed when he's on duty. But something that would stand out like if he's at a parade or a social event. And three people, me, myself, and I were commissioned by a few other folks, which remain nameless from, I think they're the protection program, to come up with a uniform befitting of chief, chief teacher. And this is what we came up with. It's a good thing he is a. Kind of looks like a general, but anyway, Mayor Smith, I will give this to you and you keep this to give my whole defense. This has been, this was a pretty COVID project, so. And Mr. Lindsey, if I need a good attorney, we talked into you. I made you complain the hell out of this one. And one last thing I want to mention, I'll make sure the mayor gets back to the seat. I'm going to take up my first responder act and Gilbert comedian. Over that, as some of you may or may not know, I, my full-time job is I'm an outreach director for Senator Tina Smith. I've worked a little bit with Mike, the mayor, talked to you folks at different occasions about different projects. I'm retiring at the end of the year after 24 years of this. I have a replacement individual, I'm hoping to get him. I'm integrating him into my position and I'm sure, his name is Orion Frankel. And I'm hoping over the, until the end of the year that, that I'll be able to have him up here and be with you folks. In the meantime, I'm not going away, going to be around for another three months in that capacity, but there's some other things I'm going to be pursuing. So, and Mayor and I have talked about future projects, future federal funding, and I think Mike, we've done kind of the same thing, and as I have done with the previous city of Minnesota. But that's all I wanted, wanted, wanted to tell you and just kind of waiting for the reaction of the police chief.
I hope he comes back.
Maybe he burped.
Yeah, he probably did. He cut out at the right time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and congratulations on your retirement, if I don't see you before then, which I, I'm sure I will. Thank you. And interim clerk Mike?
I don't have any further comments besides what we talked about in our planning session, so good.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the old business, Minnesota Power Regulator rebuild of $22,000, which we discussed at our work session.
Basically, these regulators were part of our system. We had a big storm, they got hit by lightning. We thought they might all be ruined, only one of them needs rebuilding. We'd like to put these back in the position that they were before. They were damaged. There's existing structure on the poles and everything, ready to hook them up. We just need to get the one rebuilt and it will boost the voltage in our system. And then we are also working on eventually making some amperage increases through larger transformers, but this is one of the first steps. And so we kind of need to get it taken care of and I'd like a motion to do that.
Excellent. Moved by Councillor Polis.
A second.
Supported by Councillor Potvin. Any further discussion? I just have one comment to, so people understand that this is one bid. They, Minnesota Power is fixing this, correct? And they do the work, there is no second bid. Because they, it's theirs.
This is the rebuilding of it. Whether they'll charge us to put it up there or not, I'm not aware of yet. My guess is they'll probably charge you something for that. This is the rebuilding of one of those regulators. It's going to, whatever firm they use to do rebuilding and that's where we're at. It's a, it's an integral part of our system. We have some issues in different areas where this is, when it was in place in the past, we had a lot less trouble. We anticipate that putting it back in the system's going to be beneficial for our wastewater plant and our water plant.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
This comes out of the electric fund?
Correct.
People should know that that's why there's that base fee on your electric fund. For situations like this, that's what that pays for. The 1445 that's on your fund, that situations like this have to be paid for by something and that's what that base fee does on your bill for your electric. That's all.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, say nay. None. Motion carries, four to zero. And on to the Minnesota Pump Works. Quotes of 1,501 80 repair and maintenance of 1,846.
Normal in the operation of our system. Could have been taken out of Sam's budget without coming to council, but he wanted to make sure everybody's aware of it, so.
I'll move.
Support. Moved by Councillor Skinsich, supported by Councillor Polis. Any further discussion?
This would come out the water fund then, you know, for pay for that.
Correct.
And again, that's where your base fees would go towards things like this on your utility bills. That's all.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, say nay. None. Motion carries, four to zero. That's all for old business. We'll move on to new business, resolution 2024-23, accepting donation for fire truck.
What we do when we accept funds from somebody donated to a particular cause, this is donate to the fire department.
I'll move.
In the amount of 911.65.
Support. Moved by Councillor Skinsich, supported by Councillor Polis to accept the donation from approved plumbing for $911.65. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, say nay. None. Motion carries, four to zero. And item B, resolution 2024-22, council service and civility.
Are you changing the language or leaving it the same?
This one was, I think we're leaving the same.
This one.
Social media one we considered to change on.
I think this one was the same.
Yeah, all right.
No, I thought that was number nine.
This was number nine with the change. Number nine with the.
Yeah, nine was the change.
My, my error. So would you amend that motion to have Brian update the language in section nine?
Yeah. I'll amend that motion to update the language and then move on.
It was to follow the, what was the Minnesota Human Rights?
Correct.
To follow that terminology?
Yes.
My understanding is that I would, I would change the language, given the life filing after the definition of protected classes from the Minnesota Human Rights Act.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
So moved by Councillor Polis to approve resolution number 2024-22 with the amendment to section nine for the correct verbiage from the Human Rights Act. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, say nay. None. Motion carries, four to zero.
You gotta pause and then.
Hmm?
You gotta pause, tie some.
Pete, do you want to present?
No, I think you should, I ended it up.
Oh, I saw it, I see how that went. We'll take a second for, to complete the presentation, the chief teacher.
See, he's already consulted and attorney. Well, I can tell you it's been a day. Probably want to look, yeah. Anyways, the only I have, mayor, council is, I put in for a radio, a grant for radios, as we're going to be updating radios, supposedly in 2026, even though it's looking closer to 2020 or 2029. It was a pretty competitive grant. They were budgeting for about $40,000 and, yeah, $40,000 in grants per agency, but they had such a high request of, of an average of $120,000 worth of requests approximately. I had requested $80,000 in this grant. We were one of the few agencies up here to actually get awarded it, but we were not awarded the full 80,000. We were awarded approximately $40,000, which it's a 5% matching grant, which would be on the hook for $2,000, which is actually a pretty good deal. However, $40,000 short. $40,000 short for the, for the grant. So my plan is the initial, I'm looking into other grants or radios. I'm hoping to get that cost down to probably $46,000 rather than the $80,000 that we needed to replace radios. Looking at some Kenwood and stuff like that, just to try to make it so we're not spending any of this city's money if we get all paid for it. So I'll, I'll have Mike do an official acceptance of the grant next council meeting. You have to do a.
Resolution, yeah.
Resolution for it. And then I'll probably sit on it for a year. And we do not have to, the grant has to be spent by the end of, or actually by, I think it's May 1st of 2026. I'm trying to work on some, some other ideas to try funding for radios, as that's, as that's the big thing right now. I've got 100 grants into the radios. My problem is when you get a partial grant, a lot of times there's other grants who won't give the money because the fire department already purchased 10 radios that are capable or six, whatever it was, and now we've got a grant for those. So getting a half a grant's great, but it might hurt us for another grant because the fire department's purchasing radios, we have no money to purchase radios. So we'll play it by ear, hoping to find some money in the next year or so. I've always said, I've always asked for, when it comes to purchasing, if it's, you know, we have to have capital for SWAT cars, I've always said, I'm always going to come after SWAT cars. Everything else is going to be money for, I'm hoping I can keep my word on this, it's close, but we have to keep, carry some really cheap radios.
I'll work with you, chief, to do a OSHA safety grant. Those aren't big, but it could help meet your goals, so.
So I had a question, that $40,000, does that just go into some pot and you just wait until the other radios come up or where do you hold that money?
So it just sits with the state, so the state.
Oh, the state holds it, okay.
State will cut the check until you submit your.
Receipts or whatever.
And we are matching $2,100.
Okay.
Deal, but my plan was the $80,000, it did work out, so.
Okay.
We're still ahead on, I've got it worked out where I can probably get radios that we need for $46,000. They're a little bit cheaper to radio. But I hate to buy new radios now, right now, because we don't need these new radios with the new encryption till supposedly 2026 or even beyond. The way the state works, it's usually a couple of years past. So I hate to buy these radios permanent service and in five years it would be half like anyone. So I'm trying to hold off, one, to find more funding, two, just while the radios are, they still work fine, and then. So I'm trying to hold off, one, to find more funding, two, just while the radios are, they still work fine, and then go from there, so.
Okay.
And Pete?
Thanks. Chief, I've got a presentation to give to you that, uh, our fine first responder director and built and suggests.
Look at his face.
That it be part of your new high school uniform. Why's that? Because it's outstanding. So, as council.
So how did this all come up?
The, the previous mayor had suggested that you might look better in a white shirt, so I need it.
That's been stewing for two years.
And you'll be, you'll be stewing for a lot more.
Yeah. I'm gonna sleep with the one eye open.
Yeah, he does live close to you.
Uh, no, thanks, chief. All right, we'll get back on track. Uh, da, 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 the city of Gilbert media policy. Item C.
Motion to approve that?
Brian, have you looked it over?
Yeah.
Brian wrote it.
Yep, he wrote it.
So it's okay, then?
With, it's a good start for, and it can be modified over the course of time as needed.
I'll make a motion for it.
It could be modified, I support it.
It feels like any of these, it, their work's in progress as things change.
May I speak briefly?
Yes.
So the, the, the purpose of this is to kind of centralize our, our social media activities and make sure that we're, as a city, speaking with one voice, which a lot of times is a natural foothold into a more robust, uh, social media regulation. And we can expand on this policy, uh, moving into the future, but this gives us, uh, at least some initial control and, uh, and it takes a step in the right direction.
I'll second that motion.
Go ahead.
Motion, did you motion? Motion by Councilor Skinsich, supported by Councilor Potting to.
It was already supported by Councilor Poless.
It was?
Yes, it was. So we're looking for a vote.
Any further discussion on social media? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries, four to zero. And then D, rink attendant.
We would like to advertise for that and ultimately have two people available when the snow rise.
I'll move.
Support.
Moved by Councilor Skinsich, supported by Councilor Poless. Any further discussion?
Is that going to hometown focus then, to?
I assume, yeah.
That's always been the past practice, and, you know.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. None, motion carries, four to zero. And on to any miscellaneous announcements.
Is calendar parking on? Is calendar parking started yet?
November 1st.
November 1st, yeah.
I couldn't remember if it's October, November.
Yeah. Nothing miscellaneous? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Councilor Poless.
I'll second.
Supported by Councilor Skinsich to adjourn a regular city council meeting at 6:36 PM. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post say nay. None, motion carries, four to zero. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.